Yeah, I'll just go to do this.
Good afternoon and welcome to the four o'clock work session of the Douglas County Commission. Today, our work session is an overview of the various tax incentive programs. Just a reminder for those of you listening online or here at the courthouse. We do not take public comment during these meetings. These meetings are for informational purposes only. If you do have public comment you'd like to provide, you're welcome to join us at our five thirty business meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brad Eldridge or Sarah.
I'd like to say a few things first if I could. And then turn it over to, is Brad or Kami starting? Kami's starting. And I'll have this team introduce themselves. This, the idea for this work session came about as we had a couple new Neighborhood Revitalization Act districts this year in two thousand and twenty-three. And, and we've also implemented a new tax system here in Douglas County that went online this year, correct?
Twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So twenty-two, October, or October twenty twenty-one.
Right. So there, this team has been through a lot of changes and there's a lot of different systems associated with our tax system. And then managing these tax incentive programs. So I really thought this would be a good opportunity to highlight a team that works very hard for our county and does a lot of tremendous work to administer our tax system and doesn't get a whole lot of accolades or front page news. So it thought it would be, it'd be good to talk through some of these different programs that we have. So maybe we could start with introductions. Kami, you want to introduce yourself for the public and then we'll just go around and then you can kick off the meeting.
Sure. There are members of the Treasurer's Office, the Clerk's Office, and the Appraiser's Office, as well as Administration, that are part of this committee. I am Kami Owens, Douglas County Budget Manager. We'll all just give a brief bio and go around the table. I've been here twenty-one years, spent several years in the Treasurer's and Clerk's Office. And now I work in county budget, state reporting of, and maintaining of municipality budgets for townships and other districts in Douglas County, setting the mill levies for all the Douglas County entities that receive taxes, tax system teamwork, economic development work, community partner agreements, bond and debt payments, those other special projects. And Candace?
Hi, I'm Candace Norman in the Treasurer's Office. I've worked here for fifteen years. I've been with the Treasurer's Office the whole time. Currently in Account Clerk Four, I handle balancing of county ledgers, daily balancing for all revenues that come in, processing all the money that goes in or out of the bank account, distributing tax funds to the various tax authorities, assisting with all tax system questions. I'm a point of contact for the Tax System Company for data refreshes and releases. Working pretty closely with other departments as far as receiving in their funds that come flow through the Treasurer's Office and still occasionally post tax payments and of course always take phone calls.
Marie? I'm Marie Bowdway. I work at the Clerk's Office. I've been with the county for a little over six years. A lot of that was actually spent in the Appraiser's Office before I went to the Clerk's Office. I am the Real Estate Title Manager. So I am in charge of the real estate functions for the Clerk's Office. My team is responsible for maintaining all of the ownership records. I administer the Revenue Neutral Rate Notice process annually. I complete the July and November state abstracts, maintain ownership records, like I said before. Administer the sorry, probably lost my place here. I administer all of the assessed values and special assessments for the annual county tax real process in cooperation with other county departments. I'm also on the Tyler Tech staff, I guess, team that meets with them weekly and the representative for the Clerk's Office for that.
Brad Eldridge, recently appointed County Appraiser. Thank you for doing that. I spent fourteen years here at the county doing commercial property valuations and just posted my previous position out there on the web. And so I'm looking forward to finding my replacement and where I go to pass throughout this year. Right now, our office is very busy setting values for next tax year. And so we're going through all the data and applying valuations and analysis to all the different types of properties. And so we have forty-two thousand properties. So we're working on that for real property and getting ready to do eight thousand personal property accounts as well. I do want to brag on these guys right here, Marie and Candace. When we did the conversion to the current tax system, they were integral on making that move forward and and keep it going each day. And so we're on the third cycle with that tax software and we're still just kind of getting it dialed in. There's a few things that, you know, they have to fine tune it for each state. Each state's a little differently. And so these guys have really worked hard on making sure that we can get those updates and fix what's needed to move it up.
I'm Heather Moore. I've been here about almost two years. I'm the Administrative Officer in the Appraiser's Office, in addition to the work that I do with the programs we're discussing. I am the Point Person for Exemptions, handle shepherding all the paperwork through us, Board of Tax Appeals. I do a lot of educating for taxpayers of how they do that, how they do the send things, their application in, what they need. A big part of my job is just educating taxpayers. I take all the phone calls. I get an awful lot during tax season, appeal season, as you can imagine. So I'm trying to tell them how the valuation process works, how the appeals process works. So that is a large part of my job during appeal season. It is definitely our busy season. I set all the appointments. I handle all the correspondence and I make all the value changes in the computer system. I also get to do some fun projects. Brad had me researching all the Airbnb's in Douglas County, which was kind of fun. And then, of course, I am the person that makes sure we have enough pins and food at staffing.
So with that, I'll go ahead and open up a PowerPoint that I share with you.
Yep, yep.
Okay, these are the members that I'll just introduce themselves to you. This is our Douglas County NRA Committee. We've kind of changed names to more of a tax incentive committee and none of us are on this committee voluntarily. So just so you know, they all got appointed. This is a list of, we tried to come up with a comprehensive list of tax incentive programs and they're always moving and they're always getting new ones. So it was, it was hard to nail down these numbers, but in Douglas County, we have ninety-six Neighborhood Revitalization Area Properties. Those are just parcels of land. That, that doesn't mean that that's how many revitalization districts there are, but that's how many properties there are. And when we're touching a parcel, it's a very manual process. So it matters the count of parcels.
Kami, the, the NRA's work, they, we designated districts so that could be like an area that has been a couple parcels in it. So we haven't authorized them individually for ninety-six of those. There've been several projects and this represents a lot, a large number of lots.
That, that's correct. And, and we're going to talk about each one of these different incentive programs just separately here in a few slides. And you'll see that Baldwin is our highest user of parcels as far as NRA districts are concerned. They're just used a little bit differently in different cities depending on what needs and statutes they're following. There are five tax increment finance districts and those are TIF districts. There's an acronym for everything here. One of those being in Udora and the rest being in Lawrence. There are three transportation development districts, which is a rebate on sales taxes and those are all in Lawrence. There is one rural housing incentive district beginning in Baldwin City. We think it will start up for the next tax roll, but there is another one pending in Udora. So there will probably be two coming online at the same time as far as the way it looks right now. There are thirteen industrial revenue bonds. I want to be cautious to tell you that that number may not be exact because this includes things like IRBs, industrial revenue bonds, payment in lieu of taxes, we call them pilots, and economic development incentive exemption properties. And all of these are following statutes and BODA orders that allow these rebates or adjustments at the beginning of the valuation cycle. So incremental property tax revenues are generated within a specific area to rebate certain developmental costs. And Marie is going to talk about NRA's.
So for the Neighborhood Revitalization Area, like Kami said before, we do have the ninety-six parcels total, seven of those are in Lawrence and eighty-nine of those are in Baldwin. Now, we do have two that we know are coming on for Lawrence and then simply a paper that have already been approved.
Eighty-nine parcels. How many, how many actually areas were there?
So Baldwin is unique or it's different than Lawrence. There was one NRA area that was determined and then they went, it was supposed to be for five years and then they extended that out. So it's the same area, but there's two different cycles going.
And you have to process every one of those eighty-nine parcels as opposed to like, here's one area.
And a few of them have more than one NRA program.
There's one with four, which the system hates. So essentially every year, the Appraiser's Office sets their values towards the beginning of the year. Once the values are ready, I create and update these spreadsheets. There's one for the NRA and then there is another for the TIF, which you'll see later. They, if there's any new tax incentive programs starting, I then create and assign taxing units to the parcels. And that has to be done in a timely fashion because we do have to report those to the state by April. So we kind of have to get all of those taxing units in as quickly as possible. Once we have this updated, though, these spreadsheets, Heather and Brad, yeah, Heather and or Brad from the Appraiser's Office enter the appropriate data and then the non-participating entities into the system. They work some magic and then verify that all of their data is correct. Once that part's done and really this should all be done before certification, that way everything is in the system, then we're ready for, you know, tax billing later in the year. That is the very short version. There is a lot of double, triple checking by just about everybody at this table that goes on with that. These spreadsheets are, as you can see, kind of doozies. This particular one is the Baldwin NRA. So what I do is I go in and I, I update all those values. And then later in the year, once I have mill levies, I can update the other side, which then calculates the distribution portion, which is Candace's area.
So Marie, I'm on the, the one slide back for the, uh, am I reading this right? That the one hundred dollar annual county admin fee is what, what covers all of this work that goes into each of these parcels?
So, yes, on some of them, that was what was determined. We are looking at adjusting that though, because there's a lot more work that goes in than.
So it can adjust it in the state or is that something that we have control over?
It's something we have control over. Yeah, we set that. So this is what the Lawrence NRA sheets look like. They are different than the, than the Baldwin, since each one is its own district. So each one has its own tab within our spreadsheet. And then this would be the Baldwin, which is just a running long, it's like three pages long.
You print it out.
Yeah. Oh, four pages, four pages.
So I'll flow in from where Marie started to speak about TIFs now. Like Kami said earlier, there are five TIF districts in Douglas County, four being in Lawrence, one in Udora. We can read here, uses incremental property tax revenues generated within specific geographical areas to pay certain eligible development costs. To kind of piggyback on what Marie has already said, there are spreadsheets for TIF as well. You'll see on the next slide. Similar to what happens with NRA's, the new values have to be inputted from what the Appraiser's set each year. If any new districts come along, Marie has to create new tax unit groups, assign the parcels to those groups, take any parcels out that have expired and then report to the state. And then based on the values that are input into these spreadsheets, there are formulas behind all these cells and there are certain pieces from these spreadsheets that the Appraiser's Office then inputs into their exemption and assessment tabs to in turn, once tax processes run, calculate the correct amount of rebate to give back to the city to then return to the developer or taxpayer. We do, and like she said, should be done before certification. It prevents a lot of headaches later to have to not go through the role correction process, but we double and triple check it and sometimes it happens, but we get it fixed. So the next part of that process is we do a levy practice run in our test environment each year before our actual levy run in the production environment. And we, pretty much all departments will double and triple check that the setup is right. Produced the value results that we expected from our spreadsheets and that it produced the right rebates on the tax bill for the taxpayer. And along with that, the right tax amounts for us to distribute to the tax authorities. If we find anything in that process, we do end up getting it corrected in both environments before we run the process in our production environment. Again, after we run a new production environment, we still go through and check every single one. And it's also a good point at this, and Brad will talk about pilots in a little bit, but it's also a good point in time to check those spreadsheets and as well. They're different from the NRA's and TIFs because the rebate calculates on the tax bill, whereas pilots, the values are all adjusted down to where they're only paying what they're supposed to pay. We're not giving a rebate back on those taxes manually. After that, the tax statements are mailed, the taxes are collected, and at the end of each collection period, I balance the distribution that I'm going to send to all of the different tax authorities and then as well as all of the individual rebates for all of these incentive properties. I do that by doing one by one and checking every single one because a little bit of rounding happens between the spreadsheets and the actual tax calculation program. And so you kind of have to account for that because you're going off the tax program for what you're distributing. And then this is further complicated by statute in that we can distribute TIF rebates when they pay half of their tax bill. But you can't distribute NRA rebates until the full tax bill is paid. So the tax system will tell me all the NRA rebates, but I end up having to make a manual adjustment to hold all the half payments, track those through the rest of the distributions until all of those parcels are paid in full. And then at that time, distribute that money to the city to then distribute to their taxpayers.
And that's just part of how the state has set up those two different.
Yes, 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 it is. So it is a way of the setup to distribution, just line by line manually checking and rechecking so many things to make sure we get it right, to make sure they're getting the right rebate, to make sure all of the entities are getting their right tax dollars. This all flows into, I mean, the TIF values especially flow into the R and R process and the abstract. It's very important that those values are set up, or yes, excuse me, revenue neutral rate. We speak in a lot of acronyms, but it's just really important all the way around for all the different processes that we all touch, that all of these be set up correctly. So that each person and department's processes work the way they're supposed to.
I can insert with that, Candace. So that's, I think, also where it's really important for commissioners in terms of when you're setting your budget each year and, and we have certified values and knowing what the mill levy is, some of these are in, some of these values are in those numbers and some are, are not. I know recently of a city that didn't calculate their TIF financing districts right and they had to roll back formulas.
That'll hurt you.
So this process is also very important in that stage as well.
I will also add that through the tax systems, I've been here for two tax system implementations and this is something that, that obviously the tax system doesn't know how to handle, even though they, they try very hard. Every single one of us at this table for this committee go through these and check these tax bills every year and not one year have we had them all be perfect on the first try. And it's, it's because the system, it may have a, something in it wrong or the developer didn't quite write the software to do it right. I mean, it, it is a hands-on, everybody quadruple checking.
Yeah, our old tax system, only TIFs were able to be calculated. NRA's were completely off system on spreadsheet only. And the tax system we converted to, the system can now handle them. However, there are two NRA properties that cannot be handled by the system that I completely have to manually distribute. And that is one parcel, the county has a different percentage than the city and the schools. And so the system cannot handle the entities having the different percentages. The other one is a parcel in Baldwin that has four NRA rebates on one property. And three of them were in the first phase and school capital was not excluded, but SB nineteen, anything that started after July first of two thousand and seventeen, you do have to exclude school capital out late from these programs. And so their fourth program is in the second phase and has to be excluded in the system. We're working with them to try to figure out how the system can handle it both ways on one parcel. So maybe more than you want to hear, but.
It's actually pretty important because I know one of our last tax incentives and it came up and I said, well, what if we wanted a different percentage? And Sarah about came out of her chair. I didn't, but now I do.
Yes, okay, good.
Information for us to have too. And, and this might be a Sarah question that it's relevant here. So between TIFs and NRA's, one of those, the county gets an actual vote on and the other one, we get kind of a veto, the ability to veto within a certain period of time. So even though it impacts a lot of what county staff does and county tax revenue, which ones?
The NRA you can approve whether or not you're in the district or not. The rest of these you only can veto. And that also includes our, our HIDs from what I understand too.
Are going to operate a lot like TIF.
We could only veto it. Yeah, which is weird because you think like they're voting in.
Can we veto it or can we just express our?
We can express our dislike. I think.
There's something sagittally where if it firms you, you can get out, but it is not. I, I haven't seen it used much.
Okay.
But there are entities that have not participated in Neighborhood Revitalization Act districts. So I think it's because like TIF stuff is off the roll more completely, whereas Neighborhood Revitalization Act district, it's in and then it's, and then they get their money back. It's a rebate. So you don't, until you pay your taxes, you can't get the money rebated. So.
And that's NRA's.
NRA's only rebate.
Are you good? Okay. So we're what, am I doing this one? I don't mind. It's a relatively new rural housing incentive district. It's a relatively new tax incentive program that we've encountered. We've gotten a lot of feedback that it's going to operate just like a TIF. So as far as our work to do on it, who will operate a lot like a TIF, Baldwin is in their beginning phases and it's thirty single family homes and they've got, you know, specific market values and infrastructure requirements, but they're approved by the Kansas Department of Commerce to move forward with that. And we're still working on how we're going to calculate this. It will start with a spreadsheet and how we expect it to function and then you know, it's just going to be handled like the tips are in the system, but we, we have meetings set up with the tax software developers and, and Marie is a huge part of that. So we'll be doing that with Udora's new RHID as well.
My understanding is they will, they're opening their public hearing in December in Udora and they will come to you all. I've asked them to come for a presentation in January.
And all of those are, those are single family lots and they'll be built over a period of time. So nothing's broken ground on.
Right. And we'll begin the rebates as soon as people have submitted all the required documentation to Brad to start that valuation process.
You might find amend the rule.
You, you can go right ahead.
The other fun thing we get to do a lot is read statutes and I know you're extremely jealous about that. But the statute for this was amended and revised last year to change from rule to reinvestment. And that also upped the bar for populations that qualify for it for different cities. And so actually Lawrence would qualify for the new rules. Have a little bit, the qualifications are a little bit different. You know, they have to take a few different boxes for that in terms of the density and size of the dwelling. But that is impossible. We'll see if it could be cut down by for us.
Because Baldwin and Udora only recently became eligible for that because of the size of the population of the county, right? So like we only started seeing these because of that will change. So this is an additional one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that's why they changed it from rural to reinvestment. Trying to make it more universal for all Kansas counties or majority.
If we're talking housing, so City Lawrence has multiple tools to choose from, which is the most beneficial for either developers or most beneficial for the city encouraging to.
I think it's sort of depend, I mean, I would say that the rural housing incentive district is really valuable for places that don't have, I mean, that is starting from scratch from, from basically ground, from raw land, if that, I was thinking the term. Neighborhood Revitalization Act districts can, can work on existing housing and they can be on. So they're a little broader in that sense from what I understand and Neighborhood Revitalization Act districts can work on commercial industrial. So they're probably the most flexible, but in essence, in many of these cases, like there, but in, in a RHID and a TIF, all of their money is coming, the re, the money is coming back to the government, to the governmental entity that put in the work to put in the infrastructure. If I understand correctly, someone nod if I get that wrong on a Neighborhood Revitalization Act, that's not the case. The money goes back to the developer. And so it's in essence, an economic development incentive program for them to come in. So that's with the TIF, they're still paying that amount of money. It just goes to pay off the public infrastructure improvements.
Yeah, in terms of, it's all about financial feasibility for the developer. And so for the majority of their costs is getting the utility and streets in there. You know, that's the issue for subdivisions. You know, if you're looking at an industrial development, it's, it's a lot, it's hard for them to get their money out. You know, the cost doesn't always equal value on those projects. And so it's, it helps them kind of get over the hump for getting feasible for them. So I guess that'll take us to payment loan taxes. And so on the, the payment loan taxes, usually they're set up on a fixed payment program and that process usually starts one to two years before it even gets to your all's desk. I start working with the, the city Lawrence on those things when they have a prospect on the developer coming in. And so I'll, I'll work on evaluation metrics. And then they work on what the payment system should be for, you know, whatever they want to incentivize them with. And so those can be very challenging because once, you know, I'll come up with the numbers, you know, two years ago, sometimes three years ago, I think they've sat around on, on some of these projects before they come to fruition and before they actually hit the tax roll. And then Candace and her team has to work on distributing and backing into that tax bill. And so I think it's very challenging on the treasurer's side to get those through. For ours, it can be kind of a delayed reaction in terms of, you know, we knew with the value of the property would have been three years ago. Those are the metrics we were using and then it doesn't get finished until three years later. And so there can be a little bit of delay in, in what they would realize and what we would observe on the value on that side. We have a couple of those projects in Udor where they make a little bit easier on it. They're based on a fifty percent of whatever the taxes would, would be otherwise. And so that calculation is a little bit easier, but as we get into these projects, the thing about them is each one of them is, is unique. And so some of them are a brainy project from the ground up. Some of them are an existing building that they used IRB funds to finance the purchase on it. And then they have excess land that's vacant and raw, not, not in the commercial assessment, it's on vacant classification. And then you have others where they're doing in addition to an existing building that already had four additions on it. And so, so on the valuation side of those, I guess, there's a lot of for us to take a look at. And then And then um, you know, as Candace was talking about, uh, some of those multi-tiered uh NRA programs. You know, the base value resets every time they reactivate that. And so we have to figure out what the differences between the first part of that project was. And then reset the base, recalculate the new value. And then each time we do that, we also have to reconcile that with what, how much value is increasing because of what they did to the property. So and the new building, the new construction and how much of that is just the market appreciation. And so we have to uh dial in and and figure out what that part is to. And but some of these houses uh in Baldwin is tricky. You know, you've got a two hundred thousand dollar house and and say they added garage. Um, did the property go up twenty thousand because the market went up twenty thousand or because they? And so and that's what we're looking at in each one of those properties.
What kind of situations result in a payment in lieu of taxes?
It's it's kind of, it's it's part of the um, I guess the the Rolodex of incentive programs that the city has to work with. And so I think those are more key for the projects where the developer wants to have a a planned budget and expectations for what their tax bill is gonna be for their first ten years.
So they're paired with, there's a tax incentive here and then a set amount of payment in lieu of taxes here that paired. Um, so when we talk about um renewable energy projects, we're not really talking about that except that there, I guess incentive is federal. And but it impacts us, so the payment, the payment of taxes is a separate conversation, is that might.
And so a lot of those NRAs that we have, you know, with the section forty two properties that we have here in town, they do get a um, it's the income restricted apartments. And so.
So some of them are from this slide, right?
The the things that are around uh Athens, Pennsylvania, Mueller Building, Nine Dale Labs. Uh, the the new one that we're getting ready to do here uh across the street. Uh, those are all section forty two properties. And so they will receive below market rents based on the tenant's income. And they can only uh receive certain types of income households. And they're usually at a certain threshold, the a percentage of the median income, either forty or sixty percent of the area median income. And so.
So those would be properties that are either through HUD or um USDA rural development?
Sometimes they participate in them. Um, it's it's uh, it's an IRS program. And and then it's granted and then it's regulated through the state. And so the uh, the federal government issues section forty two money throughout all United States and then they portion it based on each state's population. And so Kansas gives a certain amount of money and then the State Housing Resource Commission portions that across the state. And they have to go through and get those uh projects approved. And so, you know, we've been getting a lot of those here about every other year and and a lot of them go through the IRS.
And we just call them tax credits.
It's it's confusing, yeah, they call them tax credits, but it's a, it's an IRS tax credit. And they spread that over the first ten years of the project. And those folks are are very sensitive to their real estate tax bill as well because they have a very thin margin. And so when they get a spike uh because of the valuation or tax basis kind of uh forward, uh, we we get to have those conversations with them and phone, try to make sure we have the value on appropriately. But we also have guidance from the State Property Valuation Department uh of the Department of Revenue and how to value those as well. I see it says that IRB statute authorizes counties to issue IRBs. Municipalities don't have the ability to issue IRBs, is that correct? Sure, I I think it's.
I think we both can.
It's city and county.
I think we can both issue them. I think cities can also issue IRBs, but it may be a different statute. Right. And we issued the IRBs on Berry Manufacturing.
And it just depends on where the property is located or? Uh, the location, you know, whether or not the cities put it designated uh district for the NRAs, the the type, the the IRBs, those are case by case basis and they negotiate that directly with the municipality. And how they do the bond financing for them.
And the question about pilots. So where does, where does the money go? So if you have, you know, variety of taxing authorities on your regular tax bill, does the pilot payment also get distributed? You know, proportionally based on those mills or is it negotiated?
That's another challenging math problem. The ones that were after twenty seventeen because of that law that uh allows us to protect the school capital outlay. Uh, so we'll have the the payment in lieu of taxes, we'll have that specific payment amount. And then we calculate what the school company, school capital outlay portion would be without the exception, without the tax benefit.
But it then would be distributed.
And then the rest of the money is distributed based on the value that's already been adjusted to create the tax bill they should pay. But it does get um distributed amongst the tax authorities based on the mill levies for that year. So it's all proportionate to what they would receive on a normal tax bill. It's just that the values on these were lowered, so they're not paying their full bill and then we're rebating the money. They're paying a bill that's less than it should be, so it's figured before um distribution. So we do have one pilot bill that we have to send by hand. And in that case, I have a spreadsheet to take the funds we collected and put in the current year's mill levy to get the right amount to send to each authority per fund. Um, but the rest of them work in the tax system and do get distributed as other taxes and legally.
So in that case, where, you know, pilot is offsetting an another local kind of tax incentive program. Um, how is it different than if it's a federal tax incentive and that pilot payment is coming here? Is it still always proportional or is there any discussion on the way among that?
Yeah, I'd say like we're learning more about pilots. I think the way we've done pilot payments in the past have been pretty traditional based off of how some of these have been set up. And so they've just been distributed based off of how, like what you take out, what you can take out. It's distributed based off of if your mill levy, who would get what piece. But I, we're, you know, with with utility scale energy projects coming online, that's been something that Brad and uh myself and others have been looking at is how is it structured in other places? Cause I think there's actually, Candace won't like me to say this, more flexibility to do things differently um in pilot legislation than what we've done in the past. So I think it's, we we've got more to learn there.
But otherwise, any taxing authority that would fall under that location would be eligible to be receiving courses of that pilot.
And and some of those pilot agreement examples we've been looking at, some of them are specifically earmarked for, say, road. Something specific to the township. And so uh they may have one pilot agreement that covers everything. And then I've seen other counties where they have a an agreement for each specific payment they want, or maybe it's just schools. Uh, they want to make sure against certain X amount each year for ten to fifteen years.
So it can be specifically applied to a single or several taxing entities, taxing authorities and even other line items within that, if need be, like the road and road bridge within.
And you're doing real well there Candace, somehow, and yeah. So, is the next one?
Uh, yeah, I can run through and we tried, we tried to come up with dollars rebated or incentivized. And the problem is that all these aren't really apples to apples. Some of them, you're taking values off the front end. And so they're not getting taxed at all. And so how much are you saving? Um, but we were able to put some good numbers on on what we could find. And that is the IRBs and pilots, we are currently incentivizing about one million dollars. And then in in taxes. And then economic development exemptions, it's about two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. And these are tax dollars, these aren't values. So these are after all the calculations.
Is it all tax or just taxed to us?
It's all tax, it's not just taxed to us. So including the state?
And the cities.
Yeah, it would be the, on the entire property, yeah. So um, I don't know if it would include the state. I I need to, I need to get back to you on that.
Um, can you give us an example? I don't think we talked about economic development exemptions or maybe I missed it.
The EDXs.
Can you give us an example of what that would be?
Brad can talk more about that, that mostly are those through BOTA?
Um, they're.
Or statutory, there you go.
Two different ways. Um, they're usually uh set up in a situation where an industry is doing in addition to their existing buildings. So for example, uh, in Grandstand, did their addition to the warehouse, they're able to show that they were going to increase their employment, our employees uh by a certain amount. Uh, there's statutory guidelines for that. And so um, you know, they they met those. Jankor Plastifon did that as well, similar situation. And so um, it has to show that there's gonna be a net uh gain to the community for most of those projects. And there's limits on what that tax incentive can be or is that just? The the ones that the city has been adopting on those has been uh thirty percent uh rebate. If it uh, if which this is a a standard baseline and then if they do leave certification on the project, they get seventy percent rebate over ten years. And is that available to counties or only cities? Not sure.
Available to an industrial, it'd probably be available to a commercial or industrial property that we, that was in the unincorporated area if that were the case.
Okay, so back on the tax dollars rebated and incentivized, um, on the incremental property taxes rebated, I can tell you that this does not include, as far as TIPS and NRAs. Um, that does not include the state of Kansas because they are not included in the calculations that we are allowed to use for TIPS. So I I absolutely know they're not included in these numbers right here.
It's some school general and a little capital outlay.
Yeah, there's very specific parts of the mill levy that you cannot include in TIPS and NRAs. And and gosh, we've been over those. Just another layer of complication when you're trying to calculate it. Um, so the Lawrence TIPS, just the twenty twenty three amounts, we decided just to go with the one year amounts because these are changing. Um, there's about one point two million dollars being rebated in there. Um, Udora TIF is about a hundred and nine thousand, NRA rebates, one point one million dollars. Um, Lawrence TDD rebates, we haven't talked much about the TDD districts with church and.
Transportation Development District.
There you go, Transportation Development Districts. And so we rebate some of our, our percentage of the one percent county sales tax back to these areas. Um, which means about one third of our one percent tax if it was collected within this district. And so Lawrence rebates are about fifty thousand, Udora rebates just started this year and it'll be about, it'll be less than two thousand dollars for both years. And then we have yet to see what the RHIDs are going to produce. So when we get a project that comes forward for either a tip or an NRA and there's a conversation about, you know, this is the, this is the the tax rebate, the incremental tax rebate that we're anticipating or asking for this project because it will create more tax dollars down the road. And so there's a benefit, a financial benefit through all of this to the county and all the taxing authorities. Uh, is there any way that that gets measured after the fact to say like this was successful in this way? And this is how many, how many, the increase of tax revenue that came after that, uh, the the timing of that tied out?
The city's economic development, of course, they do each year tries to quantify all those. And they do check-ins, especially with the ones that have metric requirements on net employee gains and certain wages. Uh, prowling, it's like that. Uh, they check and make sure that that uh, there's some accountability there for those things.
Would they be looking only at city income?
Yeah, the city does that for theirs.
They do some estimating for the county. Right, the city of Lawrence, but I don't believe we get that from the other entities.
But that's something that we could ask for if I'm moving forward, because as as Baldwin and Udora are kind of stepping up and having additional um incentive programs.
I think that's something we could discuss with them.
We could discuss that. I think Udors were the only ones that apply based on current programs.
So we've talked a little bit about what the team works on, um, the programs through this tax incentive programs throughout the year. Um, but Candace, uh, if you don't wanna read it, I can read it for you. But uh, I thought maybe you could explain the kind of flow chart on how we go through these departments just really quick.
Yeah, it's kind of the briefer version of what Marie and I walked through earlier. Um, but basically um administration notifies the tax team. Um, the appraiser set their values, clerk's office updates spreadsheets, creates or assigns tugs, tax unit groups, sorry. Um, the appraisers set up their exemption tab and assessment tab in the tax system. Um, practice levy process gets run, everything's checked as far as setup and bills, actual levy processes run. Again, checks set up and bills. Uh, treasurer's office mails tax statements, taxes are paid and collected. And then the treasurer's office distrib distributes taxes to the tax authorities and the rebates to the cities to in turn distribute to the developers or the taxpayers, depending on the program. In a nutshell.
Yeah. So all year, we work that out until October thirty first. And even then, um, some of our spreadsheets end up with little red highlights because we've got questions for each other. And we meet um, pretty regularly. And uh, these are just some of the kind of potpourri of what um, some other things are that we do within those districts. We track the boundaries to make sure that we've got everything correct. We do lots of communicating back and forth with the city to make sure that we're all on the same page. Um, we determine the administration fee for NRAs, um, which is a discussion that Brad has helped us come up with a lot of. Well, trying to come up with a real tangible number, you know, um, not just a hundred dollars. Um, and they, they're different for every single agreement, just depends on what we've learned.
And Kami, I noticed on some, it's a percentage and on others, it's that hundred dollar fee. Do you know when we went?
We've changed, we've done it about three or four different ways at different times as our evolution has evolved. And then, you know, the Lawrence projects were all single property, single district. I think Baldwin sort of confused us in that sense because um, you know, it's one district and and with a multi-year, properties can come online. So what I've seen in other communities, what they, what we probably should have done is an application fee or some sort of fee that the county keeps for each property. And so I I do think we could possibly go back to Baldwin and ask them to change that or or modify that. But at the time, you know, we weren't really sure how, how big, um, how how complicated these projects would be.
Right, and we determined if the system will handle it and whether or not we've got it calculated correctly. We do lots of speaking with PDD and and.
Property value division with Kansas Department of Revenue.
Sorry, we're really good at speaking in it. Um, yeah, and uh, we just monitor this. Uh, Marie and Candace are the Bulldogs of these spreadsheets and they uh make sure that they are getting correct tax bills to the property owners.
Which has changed every year for the past three years since we've been in the new system. Because the first out of the box version worked a certain way. Year two, the calculations worked a certain way as we were trying to get them to correct a few things on these things, on these programs. And then this year, the third year, it was even different than last year.
And it will be different next year because we put off some im- implementing.
So this team is manually calculating those things multiple times throughout the year. And and after we're getting software updates and patches, just to make sure it gets through.
And thank you for that.
Mistress, that's all we have.
I appreciate it. First, I wanna say, I think when I talk to the public, they don't, they just assume it magically happens. And that's really unfair to you all and the work that you do. Um, because it doesn't magically happen. And they also expect it to be right every time with no mistakes. And I don't think, um, and it's no fault of the public, so they're just, they're unaware, right? That they don't understand the complexity that's behind it. Um, and and so I I just wanna thank you on behalf of our community um for all the work that you do.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, if there's no questions from Commissioner Willie, um, no, we're good. Um, we will adjourn until our five thirty business meeting.